Applicant and then we'll get into the public hearing. So, thank you very much and thank you for being here. Welcome. I'm gonna take a moment to see if everyone could silence their cellphones. That's my rule. Welcome. Good morning. Welcome to the first public hearing of the Resorts World New York City Square, New York City Community Advisory Committee. My name is Stacy Fefferamato, Assembly Member for District 23, and I serve as the Chair of this committee. By law, the committee consists of members appointed by specific elected officials who represent the proposed project site. Other committee members joining me today include Nicole Garcia, appointed by Mayor Eric Adams, Stevens Martinez, appointed by Governor Kathy Hochul, Betty Bratton, appointed by Councilmember Adrienne Adams, Senator James Sanders Jr., self-appointed, Queensborough President Donovan Richards, self-appointed. The Community Advisory Council Committee Overview. This committee is statutorily charged with reviewing the Resorts World New York City application. To achieve this, each member of the committee has been viewing, reviewing the application, and today we are receiving public comments regarding Resorts World New York City. The Gaming Facility Location Board established September 30th, 2025, as the date by which the vote must be conducted as to whether this project should be advanced to the Gaming Facility Location Board. Right now, we're gonna have a presentation, 20 minutes, from Resorts World New York City. Thank you.
Good morning. All right. We are thrilled to be here, taking one step closer to realizing the 15-year-old mission to bring a world-class and transformative development to Queens. From our chairman to every team member, we thank the CAC for this opportunity and extend our gratitude to everyone who shares their feedback today. My name is Kevin Jones. I'm the Chief Strategy and Legal Officer for Resorts World New York City, and I'm here with Bob DeSavio, our President of Genting America's East, and Michelle Stoddard, our Senior Vice President for Community Development. We stand here today on the shoulders of a much broader team across a long list of disciplines. Together, Bob, Michelle, and I will quickly recap the July 21st presentation to the CAC and then provide real-time updates on the community benefits package in connection with our application. For those in the audience and those who are watching online, we highly recommend taking some time to go back and review the full presentation if you haven't done so already. We also invite everybody out to the atrium in our property to see a state-of-the-art 3D model, which will give you a real feel for the breathtaking scale of our project. Now, let's start with our collective success. Thanks to our community support and partnerships, we have kept all the promises we made. In 2009, we accepted the challenge to revitalize the Aqueduct Racetrack, restore its status as a preeminent gaming location, and reinvest in the community. We broke records in the process, becoming the highest revenue-generating casino in the U.S. outside of Las Vegas, giving over $4.5 billion to the State Education Fund, and establishing a workforce of over 1,000 team members for mostly the community, who are paid the highest wages in the industry and are part of the most diverse gaming workforce in the United States, period. The whys behind our project are both clear and convincing. We sit on a 73-acre site that already has existing operations with $1.1 billion invested to date. We have proven our ability to build and run the highest grossing gaming facility in the country. We sit on the only site that is ready today, as we speak, to handle the types of public transit and vehicular traffic that you simply must have, if any, if you have any prayer of realistically generating billions of dollars in revenue without creating a congestion nightmare. We can handle any traffic through existing on-property connections to JFK, the subway, air train, public buses, and thousands of covered-and-surface parking spaces. And we have successfully ensured public safety and built a strong community partnership link the last 15 years. Those community partners and partnerships are critical because they're why Resorts World is a trusted neighbor, particularly when it comes to public safety and responsible gaming. Our efforts have consistently reduced local crime. We literally wrote the book on how to run an effective, responsible gaming program in New York City. And our community has embraced a casino at Aqueduct. We don't hide it. Instead, we acknowledge it and we take that responsibility seriously. And for many, hopefully obvious reasons, Resorts World is a clear choice for a downstate commercial license. We have the fastest speed to market of anyone, and we have the ability to open in six months from licensure by next summer. We're talking about a head start of up to five or more years on the ground-up site. That's five years of $500 million in annual state education payments, an incremental $1 billion going into the state in the first 12 months, and that's another $1 billion to the MTA by the end of the first five years, benefiting anyone who has had to wait on a subway or a bus. And those revenues and benefits will continue for the life of our license and hopefully well beyond 30 years. Our site will proudly host the largest casino in the U.S. because we've been here, operating for almost 15 years with a global team and a world-class vision. A-L-L. All. All of our requirements are complete. CBAs, our PLA, land use, seeker, permitting, all of it is done. And importantly, we have the most transformative community benefits package, which we will deliver faster than anyone because we're not waiting on a commercial license to do it. With that, Bob will quickly recap what our project means aesthetically and financially for our community.
Thanks, Kevin. Good morning to the CAC members and good morning to the public for coming out. Good to see all of you today. I've said it before and I'll proudly say it again. Working on this iconic and transformative expansion for Resorts World has been the most exciting and rewarding opportunity in my 40 years of experience in the gaming industry. We are talking about a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to take a site that was specifically designed to attract millions of gaming customers as far back as 1894 and ushering it from a $1.1 billion revitalization and record-setting operation that Resorts World made possible today to a $5.5 billion fully-integrated resort, which will finally realize the community's vision for a world-class destination at Aqueduct. When you put that investment into a 73-acre site that was literally designed to be a gambling destination, you get why we are so confident in what we can deliver. The largest casino in the United States, which we don't need to minimize or hide. We're proud of that. But the real magic happens when you combine the largest site with the largest untapped market in the country. That's when you tap into the magic of an integrated resort where the sum is greater than the parts. That is when you become more than a casino and offer jobs, revenues, amenities, and community reinvestment on an unmatched scale. And that is where the Resorts World difference really shines. This past weekend, we celebrated our 60th anniversary of successfully running some of the earliest and largest integrated resort properties in the world. The synergies you get when you combine casino hotels with the luxury and vast entertainment and leisure opportunities is that special sauce embedded in our DNA. I have built and managed casinos with almost every major casino operator and can attest that nobody knows how to design and run an integrated resort better than Resorts World. We put all of that knowledge into a world-class design that we think looks phenomenal inside and phenomenal on the outside, with spaces for community activations year-round. What excites me most about the entire project is our capacity to create 14,000 indirect jobs and 10,000 direct jobs, including 5,000 permanent positions and 5,000 union construction roles, representing millions of union work hours. The two things that I just cannot stress enough is that we have the ability to deliver thousands of those jobs by this time next year. And those jobs are strong union jobs for our community with a six-figure median compensation package, even if you have limited college experience. That is why I'm so excited to provide three updates since we last spoke less than a month ago. As we just announced yesterday, starting on September 16th, we will be hosting onsite seminars with our dealer school trainers to directly engage our neighbors and show them what they can expect working at an integrated resort of this size and caliber. Since we last spoke, we also announced that on the same day next month, we will be launching the first the first of multiple Resorts World Career Centers at Jamaica Station, where Queens residents, commuters, and anyone interested in working at Resorts World will be able to walk in and learn about the litany of options available to them at our facility. And since we last spoke, we've expanded the reach of CUNY's Intro to Gaming Operations to complement our dealer experience and career centers. A large part of that work was made possible with the help of Michelle, who will now take a deeper dive into the community benefits package that we put on the table. Hi, Michelle.
Thanks, Bob. Good morning to everyone here. I am one of many Day One employees at Resorts World. Most of you in this room have worked with me on countless Resorts World community partnerships and initiatives. Therefore, you know firsthand how much pride I take in presenting our extraordinary community benefits package, which my team is already busy rolling out. In order to explain our community benefits package, I have to first recap the core principles that underscore all of our efforts. First and foremost is D-E-I-B. Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging. We are the most diverse gaming property in the U.S. because our D-E-I-B program sets the gold standard. And we don't stop with our own workers. We apply those same principles to make sure we're generating real opportunities for minority and women business enterprises and service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. The same is true for our approach to small businesses, where we are intentional about building a more diverse supply chain. But we know we cannot walk, we cannot do this work alone, which is why we gladly took up Senator Saunders' challenge to form and successfully launch the Southeast Queens Business Incubator last year. Our application is full of letter after letter showing overwhelming community support for work that we have been doing. And our community partners were confident, we're confident the grant of a commercial license will allow us to scale up our efforts and to go from having a positive imprint to being truly transformative. And you don't have to merely take our word for it. You can ask any number of leaders in our community who have all supported the work we're doing. Dennis Walcott from the Queens Public Library. Bruce France from Jamaica Hospital, who's here with us today. Leonard and Courtney French from Jamaica Center for Arts and Learning. Justin Rogers from Greater Jamaican Development Corporation, also here today. Roger Genfren from New Hamilton Youth Civic Association, another Resorts World Day One employee. He's also set in class, but we'll keep that secret. And we have Mark Morell from National Urban League, along with Cedric Do from the Jamaica YMCA. We also have Seth Borstein from QEDC, my former boss, who took me all around Queens, showed me the roads. He recently retired, and I think Ben is here supporting us today. And David Kupersky from the Boys and Girls Club. And those are just naming a few. It is with our D-E-I-B principles, our focus on generating opportunities, our union and our community partners, and all of those supporters, that we offer a community benefits package that is bigger and faster than anyone else in this process. The first problem with our community benefits package is near and dear to my heart because it's what I do every day. I'm speaking about our corporate philanthropic efforts through our Resorts World GIVES program. RWGives is the number-one investment of our corporate dollars into the community through a funding and grant platform that anyone in the community can go to our website and apply for. We provide millions in local funding every year through RWGives and plan to increase that by $5 million per year, which will give $25 million to the community in just the first five years of a commercial license. That support will continue for the life of the license, which will hopefully be 30 years and beyond. RWGives focuses on Queens, but we have provided funding throughout the entire city and long term. That funding gives resources, empowerment, support, impact, programs, services, and so much more. And since we last spoke in July, I'm proud to say that RWGives has funded over 250,000 new community grants. That is in the last month alone. Your vote of support will allow us to greatly expand our work. Now, I'll turn it over to Kevin, who will wrap up with a description of the other problems of our community benefits package. Kevin?
Thank you, Michelle. In addition to our RWGives program, our community benefits package includes hundreds of millions of dollars in reinvestment in the first five years alone, which we are committed to support not just for the duration of our commercial license, 30 years and beyond, but starting today. We can't stress that enough because we have already done every single thing in our community benefits package. We are not waiting for a commercial license to do the right thing. A commercial license scales us up, speeds us up, but we're not waiting on what needs to be done. We've already spent the funds to fully design over $100 million in community infrastructure improvements into our project plans. We did that because we've been here for 15 years, working directly with most of you to hear what is actually needed. That means using a public green space plan that community board can shape for us. That means shortening the existing connection to the A train at our site and building a two-way platform. That means improving another one of our strengths, our ability to handle all the traffic necessary to support and integrate resort without expecting people to walk long city blocks in their towns or with pockets full of cash. Then you have our commitment, about the $25 million per year, towards the largest and most expansive workforce housing initiative of not just any casino, but of any private enterprise in the entire city, period. Our joint venture with Sears Workforce Housing is a ground-up effort with the unions to produce up to 50,000 units of workforce housing throughout the entire city. With up to $25 million per year, over 30 years, we're talking about $750 million going to housing alone. That commitment, combined with funds from Sears, will produce tens of thousands of union jobs and over 90 million work hours. Then you have our commitment to what we call the Innovation Campus and Fund. The best way to understand the Innovation Campus is to look at it in two parts. You have our campus priorities, where we took feedback from the community to maximize the use of our site for community activities. And then you have our off-campus community priorities, where there are work in progress because we plan to identify and shape those with the leaders in this room. To fund the priorities, we have committed an upfront amount of $50 million on licensure. And then we have committed another $25, up to another $25 million every year of licensure, which would amount to $125 million in the first five years alone. Our campus priorities include a Queens Stink Center, a center for health and wellness, and a world-class basketball and athletics and media lab facility that we call the Jet Center. Off-campus, our community fund will grow to over $750 million over 30 years, which will allow us to pursue any number of worthy causes across Queens and throughout the entire region. Oh, and I would be remiss if I didn't highlight the fact that since we last spoke, we already launched our first $300 million, 3,000-unit workforce housing initiative in Flushing. Through the work of Sears, we will co-fund a workforce housing initiative that will transform the old Flushing Airport into a vibrant neighborhood with a new school, I hear you, Borough President, job training, and a host of benefits. But we'll talk about that more at the next public hearing. For now, I'll close with the obvious. Our bid is more than a bid for a commercial license. Our company is more than a casino. We share your love for what this borough is and what you believe it can be. It's a place where 200 languages are spoken, but dreams are all understood the same. A borough where everyone has a shot. Thank you.
Come on, okay. Thank you for that. Here are the hearing rules. We have some ground rules we'll just go over. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the community to offer comment on Resorts World New York City and not a venue for the public to ask questions of either the committee members or the applicant. Individuals wishing to speak must sign up at the registration table. We will be taking speakers on a first-come, first-served basis. Speakers will be allowed two minutes to present their statement. Elected officials will be given a priority. A countdown timer is visible, so each- A countdown timer is visible, so each speaker is aware of how much time they will have remaining. In-person attendance will be capped when at capacity. Today's hearing is being livestreamed, recorded, and will be posted online soon after the event concludes. The recording will be closed, caption for the hearing impaired. In addition to presenting comment today, there are additional ways to provide comment. As mentioned, today's hearing is the first of two. A second public hearing will soon be announced. The committee will also receive comment by electronic mail at ResortsWorldNewYorkCityPublicComment@NYSTech.com or by mail, which should be directed to Resorts World New York City Community Advisory Committee, care of New York State TEC, 540 Broadway, Third Floor, Albany, New York, 12207. All comments, spoken, email and written, will be documented and given equal review and weight by the committee members. While there is no deadline for submitting comments, please note that the committee must complete its work by September thirtieth, 2025. Those wishing to submit comments are advised to do so as quickly as possible. And that's all, so we'll start with public comment. You want the mic? All right, so if we can get numbers one through five to line up, please, at the microphone? And just remember, when you step to the microphone, please just say your name and your speaker number. Thank you so much. Just before we get started, is there any elected officials in that need to speak first? Elected officials will take priority today, so, okay, go ahead.
Good morning. I'm Bruce Flans, sorry.
Just waiting on the timer. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Bruce Flans, president and CEO of the Medisys Health Network that includes both Jamaican, oh, sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
By now, you know who I am. So I'm the CEO of Medisys Health Network, which includes Jamaica Hospital and Flushing Hospital, two safety net hospitals in Queens. I have been with our organization for over fifty years, more than half a century, and I know firsthand what a true community partner is. I'm here today to tell you that Resorts World New York City epitomizes the definition of a true community partner. Over the past fifteen years, I have witnessed Resorts World New York City's tremendous commitment to the borough of Queens and to New York City. They share the same values and goals to improve the quality of life in our community as we do at Medisys. Resorts World has a proven track record of giving back to the community, and Jamaica Hospital Medical Center has been a recipient of their generosity. Over the years, they have donated much-needed funds to support many of our clinical services and programs at our hospital, including our trauma center, hospice, emergency medicine, and most recently, our cancer care program. Resorts World New York City has funded the remodeling of our hospital's pediatric emergency department waiting area and the pediatric inpatient unit. In addition to their financial contributions, members of their leadership team have volunteered their time on multiple occasions to read books to children admitted to our hospital and distribute gifts to them. In 2020, when we found ourselves at the epicenter of the COVID pandemic, Resorts World was one of the first organizations to reach out to help. They donated thousands of meals to our staff, as well as provided personal protective gear to help keep them safe. In 2022, we focused our efforts on addressing the lack of quality cancer services in Queens by creating a comprehensive cancer program in affiliation with Memorial Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center. Resorts World once again demonstrated their support by donating nearly three-hundred-thousand dollars to this program. By awarding Resorts World this license, you will be contributing to the growth of our community by creating thousands of jobs and opportunities. Awarding them with this license will also generate more revenue for New York State and public education. For these reasons and many others, we fully support Resorts World New York City's application for a full-scale casino license.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Dawn Kelly, and I am the proud co-founder of The Nourish Spot, a small business rooted here in Southeast Queens, and also a Queens Dream Partner of Resorts World New York City. When Resorts World opened its doors in 2011, they made a commitment not just to operate a business, but to truly invest in this community. Over the years, I've seen those promises come to life, from providing good-paying jobs to local residents, to supporting small businesses like mine through vendor opportunities. Resorts World has proven to be a partner that listens, engages, and delivers. For me personally, the partnership with Resorts World has been transformational. The Nourish Spot is a health and wellness brand born out of love for this neighborhood, and through our partnership, we've been able to expand our reach, showcase our products, and contribute to the wellness of thousands more people. That's just not good for my business, it's good for the community. What excites me most about Resorts World's plans for the future is that they are not thinking small. They are thinking about intergenerational impact. They are envisioning a world-class, integrated resort that will elevate Southeast Queens onto a global stage while continuing to center the voices and needs of families, entrepreneurs, and community organizations right here in Queens. As someone who employs and mentors young people in Queens, I know how critical it is that we create opportunities that build skills, careers, and wealth for the next generation. Resorts World has already demonstrated their commitment to that work, and this expansion offers a chance to do that at an even greater scale. So this morning, I stand in strong support of Resorts World's transformational growth plans and their application for a full casino gaming license. I do so not just as a business owner, but as a neighbor and a community partner who has witnessed firsthand the positive ripple effects of their investments. I encourage you to see this expansion for what it truly represents, a continuation of promises kept, a future of deeper, more sustainable impact for Southeast Queens, and in the lyrics of Queens on Lost Boys, because together we represent it and putting Queens on the map.
Good morning, all, and thank you, CAC, for the opportunity. Before we get started, I want to thank Robert and Kevin for a fantastic presentation. I just celebrated ten years at the Queens Chamber. Michelle and Resorts World have been with us every step of the way, and so we're thankful for your past support and look forward to supporting this project more than ever. My name is Tom Gratch. I'm the president and CEO of the Queens Chamber of Commerce, the oldest and largest association of business in Queens. New York City's next frontier of work is here, and it's gaming. With the state considering up to three new downstate casino licenses, we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in a generation to grow our economy and create thousands of middle-class jobs in the communities that need them most. Just to digress for a quick second, these are more than jobs, these are careers. Jobs come and go, but careers last forever. Fortunately, we have a proven partner right here in Queens, Resorts World New York City. Resorts World's $5.5 billion expansion will create 5,000 quality construction jobs with 3,500 permanent positions working here within six months of receiving a license. They're already preparing New Yorkers through their free Intro to Gaming Operations course at York College, on whose board did I serve, and a career center on Salford Boulevard in downtown Jamaica. These new opportunities extend beyond gaming, hospitality, IT, security, facilities, food and beverage, and community development are also coming online. Nearly eighty percent of Resorts World's current 1,000 employees live within five miles of the facility, and the median pay for those folks exceeds $80,000 a year, keeping wealth in Queens and supporting local families, and by the way, building generational wealth. Resorts World also strengthened Queens' small business ecosystem by prioritizing local vendors and encouraging guests to shop and dine locally. By prioritizing local hiring, building career ladders, and supporting small businesses, Resorts World is helping preserve and grow the middle class in Queens. Their expansion will bring sustainable growth, strengthen local businesses, and invest directly. We don't often get opportunities like this, but the Queens Chamber of Commerce fully supports, strongly supports Resorts World for a downstate casino. In closing, as the most diverse county in America, the fourth-largest city in America, larger than fifteen states, with over $35 billion of current activities at both LaGuardia, Kennedy, New York City Football Club, major addition to the U S T, and a recent rezoning of over 220 blocks in downtown Jamaica, Queens is ready, and Queens deserves this project. Thank you very much.
Good morning.
Just want to make everyone aware that we changed that it's two minutes to speak to give an opportunity for more people to participate in this hearing, so please keep it down to two minutes. I know you probably timed yourselves, but you know your key points, so thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Livingston, a forty-seven-year resident of Southeast Queens, father, grandfather, and business owner. When I talk about partnership and impact, I think back to 2015, when I walked through the doors of Resorts World seeking guidance in a meeting with Ms. Scottard on a newly minted organization called One Hundred Suits. In 2017, the first investment Resorts World made there within One Hundred Suits, they donated chairs so that we could benefit a struggling restaurant that didn't transform the restaurant and had hundreds of patrons enjoy the new space with the chairs, eventually letting them open a second location. From there, a true partnership was born. The growth of the partnership in 2018, Resorts World continuing its investment in One Hundred Suits, enabled us to expand our services to provide business attire throughout New York City. Since that time, One Hundred Suits has suited over 150,000 New Yorkers. With their support at our fundraising galas and supplies, it only fueled the growth. Fast forward to 2023, the measurable impact, Resorts World invested again in our fundraiser. That investment helped us spearhead a 65% decrease in shootings in our catchment area. Real measurable impact, real community impact. Beyond One Hundred Suits, Resorts World investment in the Southeast Queens Business Incubator, the community organizations, Department of Education, hosting the STEM conferences in which my stepson is a part of, with the new historic HSBCU High School coming to Southeast Queens, these are the kind of spaces that we deserve to have in our community. And so hosting job fairs, toy giveaways, and you talk about jobs, plentiful jobs, living wages that people can uplift our community, Resorts World has completely delivered. As someone who loves Southeast Queens as much as I do, it's my civic duty to support such an institution pouring back into our fabric of our community. One Hundred Suits constituency have effectively, have been benefited by the work of Resorts World, and so I wholeheartedly endorse Resorts World, the team led by Mr. Scottard, for what you do in our community, you have my support.
Can we get speakers six through 10 to the microphone, please?
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Solomon. I am co-executive director of Culinary Careers Program. We are a thirty-five-year-old national culinary arts workforce development nonprofit based in New York City. We provide under-resourced high school students in sixteen New York City schools in all five boroughs and select adults with culinary arts education, job skills training, apprenticeships, scholarships, and career opportunities that position them for lifelong success. We work in three key Queens high schools, August Martin, Francis Lewis, and Long Island City High School. So, and we've also run other programs out of Queens. It's a very important region for us. Resorts World has been a key supporter of ours. We love working with them. They have a genuine commitment to the community. Importantly, we are very excited about their proposed expansion in Queens. The casino will feature a number of food options, creating a fabulous place for our alumni to build their culinary careers. We all know how good the food is in Queens, and they're going to make it even better. We look forward to also having a formal U.S. Department of Labor certified apprenticeship program with them in Queens. So we enthusiastically support them, and I am early in my two minutes.
I will gladly take her extra twelve seconds. Good morning. My name is Greg Mays. I'm the founder and executive director of A Better Jamaica. We're a Jamaica-Queens-based and focused nonprofit organization engaged in activities designed to strengthen the collection of Southeast Queens community collectively known as Jamaica. Our budget is, stands at about $425,000 to give you a sense of how small we are, but only God knows it'll be after the destructor-in-chief finishes his tenure. I'm here today to publicly express our gratitude for the support that we've received from Genting Resorts World Casino, New York City. We received our first grant from them in 2012, which I think was the first year they started to support community organizations, and we received our latest grant from them just this April in support of the Jamaica Dance Festival. To make a long story short, Resorts World has been there and continues to be an important part of our success and the success of other tiny nonprofits throughout Southeast Queens and obviously the borough. Finally, I'd like to make two quick points. First, it's important to spread the wealth. Everybody knows that Homer Cityfield, home of the National Tennis Center, Flushing, blah, blah, blah. Let's spread the development wealth by continuing to invest in Southeast Queens and this spectacular facility that is planned. And second, I'd just like to say that we all know that community benefits agreements are only as valuable as the integrity of the organization making the promise. There are a lot of promises made by organizations who are building in the community, and then there are organizations who actually do what they suggest they are going to do in terms of benefiting the community, and that is absolutely positively Resorts World and the fabulous, can I get an amen, Ms. Michelle Stoddard, leading that way. That's it.
I probably gave it to you. No, seven. Here we go. Nervously folded up, sorry. Okay. Hello, everybody. Good morning. Thank you to the advisory committee for providing this opportunity to speak today. My name is Katha Feffer-Cato, no relation, but would love to be, and I am the founding executive director of the Queens World Film Festival. I feel an affinity for Resorts World because we both launched in 2011, and we both understand what it means to keep at something and build community over time. As a film festival based in the world's borough, it's important for us to get out, meet people, engage in the cultural life of Queens. Resorts World is everywhere in that ecosystem. If you attend a meeting with Queens Economic Development Corporation, Queens Rising, Queens Chamber, at the library, or any of our cultural gems, they are not only here in the room, they are advocating for all of us, and I'm here to tell you how such advocacy has affected our program. Queens World received support for our Listening Tour program, which interviews Queens residents about hope and resilience, compiles their stories, screens them for free, and then archives them everything with Queens Memory Project at Queens Library so that future generations can understand how we got through whatever this is that we're getting through. With that support, we partnered with two other Queens organizations, hosted eleven young, first-generation Queens college students as festival associates. Six were the first in their families to even call themselves an artist, and with their support, they conducted twenty-eight interviews, produced eighteen videos highlighting Queens' voices not usually celebrated. From the ninety-four-year-olds at the Alpha Phi Alpha Senior Center in Cambria Heights to the young creatives at the Fortune Society, whose lives have been impacted by the criminal justice system, our associates with the support of Resorts World lifted those voices. They even mentored the Fortune Society participants to take on the production roles and interview each other and share their reflections on hope. Resorts World made that possible, has made similar initiatives happen at more than sixty-five organizations across every kind of need, food scarcity, parks, blood drives, the arts. The expansion that Resorts World is undertaking will only amplify their already robust, robust portfolio of support, bring more visitors to our borough, boost our economy, support our local businesses, amplify the worldwide profile of Queens, New York, and ultimately provide more opportunities for engagement for everyone at every level for decades to
Good morning, committee.
Good morning, committee members. I am Justin Rogers, president and CEO of Greater Jamaica Development Corporation. I'm here to testify in support of Resorts World, New York City's application for a full-scale casino license at Equidoc Race Track in Southeast Queens. We have seen firsthand of a tremendous impact Resorts World has made since 2011. They have created steady jobs for local residents, supported small businesses, and generated critical resources that strengthen public services across the state. Currently, about 80% of Resorts World 1,000 employees live within five miles of a facility, meaning those wages are largely spent in Southeast Queens businesses. Resorts World's expansion will create 5,000 jobs, including 2,500 permanent jobs. Thousands of those jobs will begin within six months of beginning granted a casino license. Furthermore, they plan to open Resorts World Career Center in downtown Jamaica, where people walking by can learn about career paths ranging from hospitality, IT, and food and beverage. Resorts World has shown deep commitment to education and civic engagement through initiatives such as the Gumbo Coalition University, which ties academic learning to real-world community impact, their partnership with York College, participating in almost every local community event, and contributing to area charities and health institutions. Throughout our partnership, Resorts World has generally supported a variety of initiatives that have helped local businesses grow and contribute to the economy, provided funding for incubator spaces, fostering innovation and entrepreneurship. When disaster strikes, Resorts World has used its scale and resources to support community. Two quick examples: during the COVID-19 pandemic, Resorts World provided thousands of meals to frontline workers, and also provided personal protective equipment, which provided grants to small businesses. When Hurricane Ida struck, Southeast Queens impacted. Small businesses were devastated. Resorts World partnered with Greater Jamaica to help businesses recover and rebuild after the flooding. In conclusion, Resorts World deserves a full gaming license. They have been in the community for 15 years and have supported multiple community organizations. We will support Resorts World wholeheartedly, and thank you for your support. Thank you, everybody.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Armando Varela, and I'm here on behalf of Assemblywoman Michaela Salage, who represents the 22nd Assembly District, including Elmont, Valley Stream, and the surrounding communities. She serves as the deputy majority leader of the New York State Assembly. As members of the Community Advisory Committee, you play a crucial role in reviewing, questioning, and ultimately determining whether proposals like the one that has genuine local support. Assemblywoman Salage recognizes that this process is about more than economic numbers. It's about how projects fit into the long-term vision of our neighborhoods. Resorts World, New York City, has been a regional anchor for over 15 years. This expansion proposal could bring significant benefits to both Queens and Nassau County: more jobs for local residents, more revenue for our schools and transit, and new amenities for families. For Elmont and Valley Stream, it means direct employment opportunities, strong local businesses, and potential partnerships with nearby venues like UBS Arena and Belmont Park Retail Village to create a bi-county destination that drives investment on both sides of the county line. We appreciate the CAC's diligence in evaluating this proposal and ensure the community's voice is heard. On behalf of Assemblywoman Salage, we encourage you to support this project and the opportunities it can bring to our region. Thank you.
Can we get numbers 11 through 15 up to the microphone, please?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Howard. I founded Flushing Chinese Business Association. Flushing Chinese Business Association is a nonprofit group with 43 years' history. In their years, we never get any money from the government funding. We go out with our help with our community and our support, and Resorts World has been one of our best friends. They are not like which many people think of the casino. Resorts World care about the education, part of the culture, and about the charity. They help the low-income family. They care about the senior. They get quickly without asking for the spotlight. In Flushing, Resorts World have to start with us for so many years. They give us a lot of support. Let me show some symbols for us. The first one, the Flushing Lunar New Year Parade. Every year, the town of the thousand people come to the downtown Flushing to work in the New Year's. They were one of our bigger traditions. Resorts World always support us to make it happen. And second, the July Mother's Day celebration, there's about over 14 years old by the Peter Two and Flushing businesses. But every year, we working together to honor mother and grandmother for their love and for their hardworking. That will become much meaningful tradition, never even stopped by Joyce Father's Day last year. Resorts World always give the support year by year. So for here, for community, we just say, "Resales World is a true the community friend. We are support Resorts World the job. We hope them will be successful." Use Chinese words, say, "真正的朋友." Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Swami Durgadas, founder and CEO of the River Fund New York, proudly born and raised in Queens, about 15 blocks from Resorts. River Fund has been able to continue and effectively implement our mission of empowering those we serve to move beyond the lines of poverty for over 30 years. All this is accomplished through hard work, dedication, volunteerism, and most importantly, by establishing meaningful partnerships with a community of care, respect, and empathy. Since 2013, in response to Hurricane Sandy, Resorts World has embraced River Fund initiatives in bringing dignity and balance through support of our Thanksgiving distribution, Christmas toy sharing, back-to-school program, and much more. Resorts World shows up for our community. Their dedicated team volunteered last Saturday for our Child Poverty Awareness Day distribution, which includes age-appropriate backpack school supplies, totaling some 6,000 shares through all our programs. We continue today to address the hardships of our neighbors with civic-minded supporters like Resorts World New York. We remain proudly grateful for their investment of those living on the lines of poverty. Their embrace makes us who we are, meeting at the intersection of humanity and service. At River Fund, our commitment and core belief is to follow through. Resorts World follows through in their commitment of support for the larger Queens community. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ellen Codadek, and I'm the executive and artistic director of Flushing Town Hall, also known as Flushing Council on Culture and the Arts. We are a 45-year arts council in Queens, and this year, again, we distributed almost half a million dollars to artists and small arts organizations in Queens, and also bring thousands of people to Flushing Town Hall and all across the borough for global arts programming to bring people together. I must admit, I'm really struck this morning, this is not in my remarks, but I'm really struck by how many people are here representing the Flushing area of Queens, pretty much the other side of the borough from Resorts World. So I think that's really incredible and really proves the reach of Resorts World NYC across Queens. While many stakeholders are here to speak about how Resorts World's proposal would bring good-paying jobs and beautiful new amenities to Queens, I want to focus on something that is equally important, and that is Resorts World's proven track record as a partner to our borough's nonprofit and cultural community. Since Resorts World NYC first opened their doors in 2011, Flushing Town Hall has experienced the crucial support firsthand. Resorts World NYC has helped us expand our reach by promoting our programs to their guests, provided direct financial support to Flushing Town Hall, enabling us to serve more families and artists with world-class cultural programming, and they've backed important borough-wide initiatives like Queens Rising, which showcases the richness of arts and culture across the borough every June and throughout the year. This commitment is not unique to our organization. We're just one institution among hundreds that have had the ability to scale up our programming thanks to Resorts World's support through Resorts World Gives, the company's philanthropic arm. Speaking as only one beneficiary of Resorts World Gives, I can say that Resorts World's involvement reflects a genuine, authentic belief that Queens thrives when its cultural and nonprofit institutions thrive. This is one point that I would like to emphasize because I believe that it's very important. Resorts World did not begin this commitment to cultural and nonprofit institutions this year. They did not begin it last year or even during COVID. Resorts World began this work nearly 15 years ago before they even opened their doors. No other proposal before the state can boast that kind of track record. Now, we're also thrilled to announce that on October 16th, everybody take it to your calendar, insert it in your calendar, we are honoring Michelle Stoddard of Resorts World at our annual gala. We're also honoring Jeff Rosenstein from Queens College, but this is Michelle's morning and Resorts World's morning. So on October 16th, our gala theme is heroes, and we applaud Resorts World's truly heroic efforts across the entire borough to support arts and culture and nonprofits throughout Queens. As you consider Resorts World's bid, I urge you to take into account not only the economic promises and commitments of Resorts World, but also their proven track record of investing in the cultural fabric of our beloved borough. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. I have such a tough ax to follow here today. My name is Wendy Pfaff-Gennaro. I'm the Director of Development at Queens Centers for Progress. We are a 75-year-old nonprofit that supports more than 1,200 children and adults with developmental disabilities here in Queens. We help them to live more independently, engage in their communities, and reach their full potential. We have early childhood education, job training and placement, residential programs, and day services, all focused on giving the individuals and families whom we serve the tools and support they need to live their best lives. Nobody helps us achieve that mission more than Resorts World. We're really proud to be a partner for 15 years, which is when I started at QCP, so I like to think I had something to do with that, but Michelle was around before me. And they really help us to continue the impact we have here in Queens for all of our families. Besides being a fixture at our events and being there for us and inviting us in, they've sponsored many of the events, and when I say at our events, that a lot of events, they're ubiquitous, and we see them everywhere, and they're there to support not just our nonprofit, but so many others. Always seeing that our favorite event, our Evening of Fine Food in February, and celebrating our 75th anniversary. But they do much more than provide sponsorships or attend events around the borough. They've really worked hard to promote organizations like ours to the greater Queens community. And one way in which they do that is, again, we represent people, and I'm here to be a voice for people with disabilities, is they have a red wall gallery, and nothing helps a person with a disability and lifts them up more than seeing their artwork hanging on a wall in a public space. And what that does for our individuals is more than money can do, and more than anything, it means so much to them. Also, very important is our individuals are looking for jobs in the community. The unemployment rate for people with disabilities is twice that of people who are typically able, and Resorts World has been a great partner in helping secure employment for people with disabilities, and we look forward to expanding on that and to enjoying them hiring more of the people who we serve. Really, that's it. They're amazing. I know that I have somebody to go to for anything in terms of resources, not just money, not just jobs, not just, you know, the beautiful red wall, all sorts of things, and they do so much for everybody in this community. So we are here to wholeheartedly support their casino license and hope that everything goes through. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the committee. My name is Alice Chu, a senior VP of Jimmy Crystal, and I am grateful for the chance to speak today. I am here as a proud committee partner of Resort World New York City. I want to share my strong support for their expansion and for granting them a Class III license. I have worked with Resort World for more than 14 years. Through this time, I have seen how committed they are to our community, to our local business. They are not just a casino. They are a true partner who cares about Queens and New York City. Through our partnership, Resort World has supported my business in many ways. They sponsors community events, helped us open a gift shop inside their facility, and give us opportunity to grow and succeed. These are not one-time favors. This is who they are. They believe in working together and having local business drive. Resort World's impact goes far beyond my own experience. They have already created thousands of good-paying union jobs, contribute billions of dollars in tax revenue for public schools, and support nonprofits, cultural programs, and youth organizations. If they are granted a Class III license, these benefits will only increase with more jobs, more community support, and more economic growth for Queens. What makes Resort World special is that they are ready to expand right now. They are ready to have the building, the staff, and the experience. Unlike others still planning, they can deliver immediate results, bringing more jobs, more revenues, and more opportunity for our community right away. Over the past 14 years, I have seen their honesty, reliability, and commitment to our city. They have sold time and gain that they know how to grow responsibly while lifting up the community around them. For all these reasons, their proven track record, willingness, and community commitments, I strongly urge you to approve Resort World New York City's expansion and grant them the Class III license. This is an investment in the people, the economy, and the future of Queens and New York City. Thank you.
Can we get numbers 16 through 20, please?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is John Janofsky. I'm the Director of Cufferburg Center for the Arts at Queens College. We are here to enthusiastically and passionately support Resorts World's proposal before this committee. There is truly no other corporate partner in the borough who has proven their commitment to the arts and cultural ecosystem than Resorts World. They truly walk the walk, and they talk the talk. They are committed to this ecosystem, the arts and cultural ecosystem in Queens, and we can't talk about Queens and not talk about the rich arts and cultural ecosystem. This comprises of businesses, artists, organizations, and communities, each of which Resorts has committed and shown their proven commitment to. They have supported our Cufferburg Center's community outreach program since I've been there, well before I was there. So I joined in 2019, and on my original kind of speaking tour and listening tour, everywhere I went, I saw Michelle Stoddard and Resorts World. At every other cultural organization's event, they were there, present with their support and their feet. And then the pandemic hit, and culture never closed. This is something our borough president talks a lot about. Culture never closed during the pandemic here in the borough, and Resorts World stood steadfast by all of their arts and cultural programs, who are committed to supporting communities and artists. Cufferburg, we came out of the pandemic with a very important initiative called Queens Rising, which you've heard reference a bit today. This is a month-long initiative, serving and committed to highlighting this arts and cultural ecosystem, and Resorts World has been there as a key partner, as our title sponsor, and have helped us bring free programs throughout the borough. Not only do they do Queens Rising, but for Cufferburg, they support our overarching outreach efforts that allows us to present free programs throughout the year, in particular in the summer where we go outdoors and present 13 concerts throughout the borough. This would not be possible without Resorts World and Michelle and her team's support. And when you look around the borough, you really do not see any other corporate entity who has invested in the arts and culture like Resorts with such authenticity. So they prove that commitment with their financial dollars, with their boots, in that they show up. they show up, and in their advocacy. And so without Resorts World, this borough would be not what it is, and certainly the arts and cultural system would not be what it is. So we wholeheartedly support this proposal and look forward to working with Resorts as a community partner for the foreseeable future. Thank you, Michelle.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chairwoman, Honored Panel, Resorts World. My name is Steven Sergiavani. I'm past Governor of Kiwanis and a President of the Howard Beach Kiwanis Club. I'm here today to support Resorts World and their, to give them the license. I want to commend you on your presentation. It was A1. What else do you expect from Resorts World? They talk the talk, and they walk the walk. You don't find that sometimes today, but Resorts World does that. Resorts World has helped Kiwanis in many different ways. They support a Halloween parade where we have over 1,000 children marched down Cross Bay Boulevard. Two years ago, we honored Michelle and Resorts World for their community service work, because all they do is help. A few years ago, when I was the Governor, we had a party at Resorts World for children, young adults with disabilities. And when they heard it was that, they said, come on in, and they footed the bill for that. Resorts World gives back to the community. It's good for the community. It helps the children. They give jobs. When they built the hotel, there was no hitches in it. There was no problems in the community. It went free sailing. You don't find that too much anymore. They care. They care about Queens. They care about New York. It's good for business. It's good for New York, and it's good for Queens. And I'm here to give my support to Resorts World on their endeavor, and I hope they get the contract. Another note, I don't know why it's taken so long. We should have had, we should have had tables in New York a long time ago. My own personal opinion, sorry.
Good morning, everybody. Okay. My name is Stephen Tin. I'm the Executive Director of Better Chan Tang USA. We are a community-based Asian-American cultural organization, organizing cultural festivals, and parade throughout New York City. Resorts World have been a community partner the last 10 years in promoting our Chinese-American and AAPI, Asian-American Pacific Islander traditional culture, to the American mainstream, to our Asian-American second and third generation, such as the New Year Parade Festival in Lower Manhattan, which draw over 500,000 tourists into New York City, plus the Midtown AAPI Cultural Parade, the Autumn Moon Festival Parade in Brooklyn, the Christmas Toys Giveaway Center Course Festival in Flushing, again, Flushing. Okay, this diversity show, Resorts World not only care about Queens. It's a casino community reach out for whole New York City. And I think that's very important, because I don't think such a good brand, all right, well-established should be seen as a New York City major attraction and service the whole New York City community. Also, Resorts World is only casino that have a very strong, that's an Asian personnel department that do outreach to the Asian-American community beside our cultural brand. I want to say thank you to the Asian Marketing Department, and of course, the major community department at Resorts World. They also support beside our culture. I could see they support a lot of traditional family association in New York City in maintaining their traditional culture and family value. And of course, Resorts World have a very strong Asian-American workforce that help many immigrant families benefits and help them settle in New York City. I see Resorts World not only provide needed jobs to the Asian community, but she also help maintain and promote Asian-American heritage. Through sponsoring all these cultural events, it bring more tourists and positive image for New York City and Resorts World. Therefore, we strongly support Resorts World to expand its operation in New York City. Thank you.
Good morning. I represent IABO Board 42 Bronx, Manhattan. I'm the Secretary Treasurer. My name is Victor Fleming. And what we do is we train, certify new basketball officials that officiate throughout all the high schools in New York. We officiate all types of schools, elite schools like Dalton, Columbia Prep, Christ the King, and then the other schools which have the metal detectors, which we say the belly of the beast. We are also in all the parks in other community, in community centers. Every year, we have an annual dinner where we honor our new officials. In the last couple of years, we were faced with a dilemma, the cost of dinners, the rising cost of dinners. Our President, Bernard Bowen, and myself, we have finance, a finance background. So we said, how can we cover this cost? We reached out to a number of organizations, and the one that came through to us or us was Resorts World. So in the last couple of years, we were fortunate enough to receive funding to cover the cost of dinners for 100 referees attending. So in conclusion, we want to thank you for reaching over the bridge to the Bronx and Manhattan and helping us support what our endeavors are, which are to help officials. And again, we thank Resorts World and their future endeavors. Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Bobby Cole, Executive Director of Empower My Hood, Inc., a growing nonprofit, and I'm here speaking on behalf of EMH, our young scholars and families in Southeast Queens. I stand before you publicly in support of Resorts World's expansion. Let me quickly tell you why. Just over the last three years, Empower My Hood has prepared more than 400 high school students from across Queens to pursue higher education. We work directly with students in underserved communities through an array of intense college preparation workshops, community college fairs, and our local scholarship program, intentionally helping students gain access to some of the best colleges across our country. Just to name a few, some of those colleges that our students have gone to are Howard University, Columbia University, NYU, and UCLA. As we approach our fifth year, we are proud to be celebrating our very first graduating cohort. This milestone would not have happened, and it would not have been possible without the support of partners like Resorts World New York City, whose generosity through the Resorts World Give has already funded several of our scholarships, directly impacting the lives of our recipients, fostering community pride, possibility, and pathways to higher education. But that's just the beginning. With Resorts World's continued partnership, we envision expanding scholarship opportunities so that even more young people in Queens can get into college, but graduate, thrive, and return to uplift their communities. Beyond college, these partnerships can open doors to our students when they step into the job market, creating a cycle of opportunity and impact that benefits us all. We are deeply grateful to Resorts World and to Ms. Stoddard for your commitment to our community and to the dreams of our young people. We look forward to growing together, because when our students are successful, all of Queens are successful. Thank you.
All right, can we get numbers 21 through 25 to the microphone, please? And also just a reminder, we do have a two-minute time limit, so please try to keep to that so we can get to as many people as possible. Thank you.
All right, good morning. My name is Dion Yu from Flushing, another member of the Flushing members. So I'm here to express my support for the project, and I'm here also to testify the community support from Resort World, especially Aisha Ma, her strong team, who I have worked over the years, and with the support, we have accomplished a lot. But there's one thing I want to point out, that their support for business is not small business. I just want to make a point that small business has a large range, and in the case of Flushing, we have over 1,000 mom-and-pop shops whom they need help. And I just want to express my gratitude and commend them for continued support of the micro-business in downtown Flushing. And I'm done. All right, thank you.
I guess, does that mean I get three minutes? Well, my name is Cedric Do, I'm the Vice President for the YMCA of Greater New York Transitional Housing Program and the Executive Director of the Jamaica YMCA. When I, when I thought about what I would say, I wrote a script, and then I said, okay, I'm going to deviate just slightly. So I think about three things that come to mind: healthy living, youth development, and community building. When we think about what Resort World has done in this community, it has been tied to those three significant aspects of our living. They have helped us have an environment that has allowed for healthy living for our folks to have someplace quality to go socially in this community. They have helped by paying the largest amount of taxes in this state for youth development programs, and they are on a constant road for community building. The other element that I wanted to speak about was workforce development, families in transition, supportive programs, housing, and after-school programs. These are the key motors that help our community operate. And Resort World has been supportive in every single aspect of this in their time since 2011, when they arrived in this community. They have been a friend. They have shown up. They have included us in the conversation, which oftentimes is one of the great challenges of having corporations come in. They want to do what they want to do. Resort World, Kevin, Michelle, and Bob have asked our opinions and asked how it will affect us, and I want to thank you for that. It matters because we're at a tipping point, and in that tipping point, we know that this could change the history of Queens forever. So with that, I wanted to personally and professionally endorse the licensing of Resort World for expansion and growth. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Denise Dixon. I'm the Executive Director for the Showing Hearts Foundation, and we have been so fortunate to have been in relationship with Resorts World. I didn't write a speech, but when I sat down, I started scrolling through my emails and could see how far back we go. And something about our organization is we function with these three pillars. One of our focuses is heart for the community, where we serve families who are unhoused and come out to families, and we meet them during crisis. And with the support of Resorts World, we've been able to meet their needs in countless situations. Our second pillar is youthpreneur. We are very focused on empowering young people, teaching them that they are a personal brand, that, that their voices matter, and that they can too, just like Resorts World, be thought leaders who are moving the needle within the community, changing the landscape. And Resorts World has shown up with us in that space time and time again, and we couldn't do some of, we couldn't do much of that work without them. And the third piece is our co-working nonprofit community. Resorts World has so graciously been a partner to us in that space, hosting nonprofit workshops. And this is where our community has benefited tremendously, because a lot of our organizations wouldn't know what to do to, to secure funding and move forward and build out their strategies. And Resorts World has been key, specifically Michelle, who is always there when we need her. And we don't take it lightly. The numbers that went up during the presentation showing thousands of jobs that are going to be created, opportunities for housing and, and development, our community needs that, our city will benefit from that, and our state will benefit from that. And we, as an organization, the Showing Hearts Foundation, wholeheartedly endorse and support Resorts World receiving the full commercial casino licensing. Thank you.
Good mor, good morning, everyone. My name is Shanae Vaughn, and I am the founder of Vaughn Bentley Creative, which is an artist's collective, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the artists, the educators, and the cultural institutions. Art is the universal language. Art is also the heartbeat of New York City. And art also increases the value of property. And so with all of that, I want to commend Michelle for like taking the torch and understanding that, especially with the red wall. Not only Michelle, but Resorts World have been inclusive, they have been supportive for the platform of artists on all levels, from first-time exhibitors to renowned artists to professionals. The goal has been to introduce talent to the broader community while fostering meaningful connections, welcoming space that allows artists to feel seen, heard, and valued, along with being encouraged. They also include networking, which is opportunities for fellow artists to build relationships with their locals, whether it's small businesses or whether it's their community at large, the members of cultural leaders and fellow artists. In partnership, Resorts World have also continues to support the unique environment by bringing the gallery experience to the local community, where you have so many people that will not have experienced art any other way. And in addition to that, I would be remiss if I don't mention their business incubator, where they were working with RDRC, which also helps small local businesses to advance and expand on their business. So I am here to endorse and fully support the expansion of Resorts World. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Gallagher, and today I wish to testify on Resorts World's commitment to housing. I'm a representative of Cerus Workforce Housing, but prior to joining Cerus, I was the Director of Housing and Economic Development for the New York City Central Labor Council, AFL-CIL. While at the CLC, we fought hard for working families to become homeowners. We fought hard for them to achieve that American dream. Unfortunately, with rising interest rates and a lack of housing production, that American dream is now a nightmare. The American dream is actually to find an affordable apartment. If you look around, we're all reading that the vacancy rate in New York City is 1.2%. Let's look at the real vacancy rate. The real vacancy rate comes from affordable housing units, and it's unmeasurable. It's non-existent. We're fighting an affordability crisis right now. The average worker is paying 50% of their gross income towards rent. It's unsustainable. Resorts World realizes that to keep a trained, skilled workforce, they have to address the housing issue. Their number-one retention issue is the lack of housing in this borough. Resorts World is not going to sit back and let the housing crisis force their employees to move to another state. In fact, they decided to invest in housing in a rather big way. Resorts World formed an investment company with Cerus to build up the 50- Resorts World formed an investment company with Cirrus to build up to 50,000 units of affordable housing in New York City, housing for essential workers that make this city tick. There's no reason why police, firemen, teachers, nurses, retail workers, all of them, working so hard that they have to live out of this state. In fact, there's no reason why city employees should be living in shelters on their mother's couches, right, or out of their cars. It's gotten to the point where it's just ridiculous. I want to say this: Resorts World is not waiting for a license. Resorts World is our partner right now. Resorts World's put up the hard money in our Flushing Airport RFP with EDC. What does that mean? They put up the spec dollars for us to compete in an incredibly competitive process to win the bid. Well, I'll tell you, they rolled the dice, they won big. Right now, between Resorts World, Cirrus Workforce Housing, and L Corp., which is a division of CalSTRS, we're building 3,000 units of housing on the Flushing Airport. Not only housing, but we're building a police station, we're building schools, we're building health clinics, we're building job training, we're putting in childcare, adult healthcare. We're doing things to lift that community up. What I want to say is that Resorts World's equity investment is really historic. I go to a lot of events, and people always talk about the Mitchell Lama Program and what that did for working families, to help lift them up out of poverty, right? Well, I'll tell you this: the Mitchell Lama Program built 102,000 units of housing. Resorts World just committed to 50,000 units. That's half of the Mitchell Lama Program. So on behalf of Cirrus, on behalf of our 14 Union Pension Fund investors, we endorse right now what Resorts World is doing before the license is issued. And what we really hope is that other corporations pay attention and follow their lead. Thank you.
Can we get numbers 26 through 31, please, to the microphone?
My name is Francine Papo, and I am the Executive Director of the School Sisters of Notre Dame Educational Center for Women in Woodhaven. We are also a small organization, and I would like to just say that I think Resorts World Casino is essential to the fabric of the entire nonprofit community in all of Queens. They make it easy for us. As a small nonprofit, it's difficult to secure grants. And since they started, we have been in existence for 20 years, and since they came, we have consistently received grants and sponsorships every single time we have asked. Every time. And while that may not amount to a ton of money, it means so much to us. And when they sponsor a table, they fill the table, they come to the event. I don't know how it's possible, but they do. Michelle comes, her team comes, they ask questions, they listen to what we're doing. And this is how they do their own research into who and what they want to support. And they do it well, it's very efficient, because not only do they give, but then they say, what did you do with the money? Give us a report, tell us how things are changing. We serve women, we provide GED education, and we provide six levels of ESOL, so by the time the women leave us, they're conversational in English, and this allows them to secure better jobs and to advance their education. And then they're qualified to work at resorts in many capacities and in all of the JFK community positions. And Resorts knows that that creates a partnership, and then they speak at events, and we attend those events, and they connect us with other partners who might be able to help us. It is a really, really efficient network, and the more they receive, the more they will give. They have promised this, they have shown it, again, since 2012, for us. And so, three, four times a year, and we appreciate you so much. Thank you. We fully support the expansion.
Hi, good morning, committee. I'm Jason Simba, founder and Executive Director of Festival Cinema NYC. We're a 10-day film festival in Forest Hills. I didn't really prepare much, so I think this will be short. Anyway, Resorts World New York City has been a longtime supporter of not just festival cinema, but of the arts and of the numerous nonprofit organizations throughout the borough of Queens. In fact, everyone in this room today has been positively affected by the support they received from Resorts World. So today, on behalf of myself and the entire team of Festival Cinema NYC, we wholeheartedly support Resorts World New York City expansion and look forward to the positive effects that you will have on the community and the borough of Queens.
Thank you, members of the Community Advisory Committee, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Brian Chenon, I'm the Chief Strategy Officer at the Chinese-American Planning Council. We are a 60-year-old social services organization rooted in community and anchored across nearly 40 sites throughout New York City, including our Queens Community Center in Flushing, that collectively serve 80,000 individuals and families annually. From early childcare and after-school programs to English literacy and older adult programming, our holistic services ensure community members not only survive but thrive. The Chinese-American Planning Council is supportive of the inclusive, community-integrated workforce and economic development potential of the proposed expansion project of Resorts World New York City, as it aligns with our agency's mission to promote the social and economic empowerment of immigrant and low-income communities. Our longstanding partnership with Resorts World NYC, ranging from disaster relief assistance to resources for our special needs programs, has demonstrated their genuine commitment to community well-being. And as an organization that provides linguistically accessible and culturally competent employment services and wraparound supports, we believe Resorts World's expansion has the potential to be a powerful catalyst for economic mobility in Queens. With its commitment to workforce development, creation of 10,000 union construction and permanent jobs, and support for career advancement, the project promises to generate meaningful opportunities for local talent, and more importantly, it also prioritizes inclusivity by engaging MWBE businesses and serving often marginalized populations, including the multigenerational immigrants, individuals with disabilities, and unemployed and underemployed Queens residents, many of whom are supported by organizations like the Chinese-American Planning Council. Thank you again for your time.
Good morning, Community Advisory Committee members and Chair. Good morning, also Bob, Michelle, Kevin. My name is Kevin Alexander. I am President and CEO of Rockaway Development and Revitalization Corporation. On behalf of RDRC, I'm writing to express our support of Resorts World New York City's proposal to secure one of three downstate gaming licenses. Established in 1978, RDRC is a local development organization located in southeastern Queens neighborhood known as Far Rockaway. Our support for Resorts World New York City is based on several factors, or even more, but I'll just name a couple, beginning with their 14-year experience and success as the largest gaming operator in New York State. Experience that well positions them to expeditiously implement their plan once awarded. Second, they have developed a plan based on 14 years of experience developing relationships with civic groups, faith-based organizations, civic groups, local organizations throughout southeastern Queens and Queens County, including a rigorous minority and women-owned business enterprise program. As one of Resorts World's oldest community partners, we are not basing our support solely on what it will do in the future, but due to their proven track record and what they've accomplished over a 14-plus-year period. This includes their active engagement in community events and activities that reflect the rich cultural diversity of Queens residents. Queens being intentional in the vast majority, their workforce are, in fact, Queens residents majority, and an ongoing commitment to doing business locally well before announcement of live gaming licenses. I hope you will consider the fact that Resorts World has a track record of community investment and partnerships, including the southeastern Queens Business Incubator, that's already graduated 30 businesses with another 30 to be completed or graduating at the end of this year. And for the record, it's not what they will do, it's what they are doing already, well before the announcement of a live gaming license. So they are invested. So I will say this in close: RDRC fully supports this, not for what they will do, but for what they have done. And remember, if they get the gaming license, Queens gets the money. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm number 31, am I the last one? On this round? Okay, so I'll make it 31 for 31. My name is Ben Gutman, I'm the new Executive Director of the Queens Economic Development Corporation. As Michelle said, I'm the new Seth as of a few weeks ago. I come to speak in support of Resorts World's innovative and comprehensive proposal. Resorts World has been a trusted community partner and longtime supporter of the work that we do at QEDC. Thanks in part to their support, we help more than 3,000 of our neighbors every year realize their entrepreneurial ambitions through more than a dozen life-changing programs. In particular, Michelle and her team have been instrumental in the success of our Queens Tech and Innovation Challenge, which we do in conjunction with the Borough President's Office every year, and we hold the final event every year at Resorts World. This proposal would result in thousands of high-quality union jobs, billions of dollars of funding for education, and increased funding for much-needed transit improvements. For generations, the 73-acre site has been home to sports and gaming in Queens, and we look forward to their vision for stewarding the site for generations to come. At a time where support from Washington is threatened, it is vital that we look for solutions to both increase tax revenue and economic opportunity right here at home. Resorts World has the track record of delivering on both of those priorities, and this proposal promises to only deepen that commitment. We heard today from representatives from every neighborhood in Queens and then some beyond that, and it's something that I heard over and over, and I can attest from my own experience, these guys are good neighbors. I asked the committee to vote in support of their proposal. Thank you again for your time.
All right, can we get numbers 32 through 35? Actually, go right up to 37, that'll be fine. Thank you. 32 through 37, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark Lupo, I am the Vice President of Development for Hardchair. We're a nonprofit organization based here in New York City. For over 100 years, Hardchair has supported over 2,500 individuals with disabilities, creating pathways to health, stability, and independence. We have more than 30 program sites here in Queens. Our mission is really rooted here in the community. A vital part of our work is helping people with disabilities find opportunities to be seen and celebrated. That's why our partnership with Resorts World has really been so meaningful. Since 2019, even during the 2020 lockdown, Resorts World has been a true partner, offering numerous opportunities for Hardchair participants to experience new offerings and experiences. Their commitment shines through our Art Share Program, where individuals with disabilities express themselves through art. Resorts World has not only displayed our artists' work in their Red Wall Gallery every year since our partnership began in 2019, but has also hosted several receptions honoring those artists. This allows our artists to share their creations with the community, receive recognition, and foster a profound sense of accomplishment and belonging in the community. It's truly heartwarming to see the artist's face light up when they see their artwork displayed on the casino walls. We are grateful for the unwavering support we have received from Michelle and her team, and wholeheartedly endorse and support Resorts World as they seek a new casino license. We believe their expansion will only significantly deepen their positive impact across Queens and New York City, and we look forward to our continued partnership with them. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for giving me the chance to speak today. My name is Shaleen Bush, and I'm the founder of Being Egypt, an organization dedicated to promoting literacy and addressing bullying among our youth. I was fortunate to be a part of a Business Incubator program that Resorts World partnered on, and that experience gave me the tools, support, and confidence to grow. Most importantly, it allowed me to expand the impact I have on children and families right here in our community. I'm also a property owner in southeast Queens, so this isn't just about business for me, it's about home. I have a personal stake in the health of this community and making sure families here have the opportunities and resources they need to succeed. What I've seen from Resorts World over the years is that they don't just operate in our neighborhood, they invest in it. They've supported events and conferences that directly affect the families I serve every day. They've shown up, poured in, back into the community, and consistently backed programs that make a real difference. We all know how important jobs are. This expansion means more than just growth for Resorts World, it means more opportunities for our neighbors, good jobs that keep families stable, and investments that ripple out to strengthen southeast Queens and beyond. For me, the importance of giving back and investing in the community can't be overstated. Resorts World has already proven their commitment through action, and I believe this expansion will give them the chance to do even more. That's why I strongly support the expansion, not only for what it means for Resorts World, but for what it means for the people, families, and the future of Queens and New York City. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Got to put these glasses on, because my 47-year-old eyes are 47. Now, my name is Cynthia Shay Clark, I serve as the COO of IREJAM Radio, the leading Caribbean media company in New York, proudly serving our community for over 32 years. We have long been the trusted voice of the Caribbean diaspora, connecting people, celebrating culture, and building bridges across communities. I am here in strong support of Resorts World Casino's application for a gaming license. Resorts World, and especially under the leadership of Michelle Stoddard, has been a true partner to us and to our community. Her investment, their investment, has gone beyond sponsorships, they have supported cultural programming, community initiatives, and ensured that the Caribbean voice is recognized and valued. This is especially important because Queens is home to one of the largest Caribbean populations in the United States, numbering in the hundreds of thousands. These families, businesses, and community leaders will benefit directly from economic growth, job creation, and opportunities this license will bring. I want to thank Michelle for her unwavering commitment to our community, her leadership has strengthened the bond between Resorts World and the Caribbean diaspora, and we look forward to building on that foundation. We at IREJAM Radio proudly support Resort World's application and the positive impact this expansion will bring to Queens and the Caribbean community. And I'm from Rosedale, Queens, and Queens does really get the money.
Good afternoon. Courtney French, I represent the Jamaica Center for Arts and Learning. Good afternoon to the committee members and guests. I want you to remember two words, and that is ripple effect. Again, ripple effect. Again, I'm from JCal. JCal is a nonprofit arts institution located in southeast Queens. Our mission is to present and provide access to visual performing arts and arts education. Resorts World has supported JCal's visual arts programs in immeasurable ways. Ripple effect. With Resorts World's support, we have presented over 200 emerging Queens-based visual arts and artists for the past two years. Now, some of those artists have their work on the walls and in the corridors of JFK. Ripple effect. Art shapes tourism and community. Through Resorts World's partnership, we can live up to the promise of New York City being the greatest city in the world. Ripple effect. I support Resorts World's application for a full gaming license. Thank you.
I'm Vanessa Carter, on behalf of Boys and Girls Club of Metro Queens. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today in support of Resorts, sorry, Resorts World New York's proposal, an expansion that promises not only economic development but continued investment in the future of our community. For over 11 years, Resorts World has been a steadfast partner to the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Queens, demonstrating their deep commitment to the youth in our community and in our area. Through their generous support, they've helped provide critical programs that offer our kids mentorship, guidance, workforce development, and a chance to succeed. As Resorts World looks to expand, we are not just talking about growth in revenue or infrastructure, we are also talking about expanding their role as a pillar of support for our community, especially our young people. We are also talking about expanding their role as pillar, as a pillar of support for our community, especially our young people. Through their partnership, we have already created lasting change, a potential to uplift our youth and provide more resources and create a stronger, healthier community for all. Resorts World's investment goes beyond business. It's also about social responsibility, empowerment, and fostering the next generation of leaders. They've shown time and again that they're dedicated not only to their business, but to the community that they serve and that we also serve. On behalf of the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Queens, we strongly support the expansion of Resorts World. And yeah, we look forward to the continued partnership. Thank you.
Is number thirty-six here? We didn't get a thirty-six speaker. Okay, can I get thirty-eight through forty-one, please? Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Eddie, Eddie Lynn. I am the Radio Program Director of Multicultural Broadcasting Company. We have been in the business for over twenty-five years, that's serving the local community and providing ancient radio programming. Today, I'm here to represent our company to support Resort Worlds in the expansion efforts. For over a decade, Resort Worlds have been more than just a business partner with us, has been a true partner at the community. What truly sets Resort Worlds apart is the deep commitment to our neighbors. We believe in giving back, in celebrating our shared traditions, and in honoring our community's heritage. That isn't just a corporate initiative, but it's also a genuine bond that we have built together over the years. Especially all the holidays that we have, like the Lunar New Year Flower Market, is one of our largest events, and we couldn't do it without Resort Worlds' biggest partnership. With their full support, we bring thousands of people and our audience together from near and far to celebrate the most significant festival in our Chinese culture. Resort World provides us not only the event space and offers, but also entertainment and gifts to our families. The generous, the generous support allows us to create a truly special and memorable event for the entire community. Resort Worlds' contribution to the community is immense, including both financial support and invaluable, intangible efforts. Their dedication and their hard work have been a consistent presence in our community. As an Asian-American-owned media outlet, we deeply appreciate everything Resort Worlds has done for us and our community. Especially, I would like to thank the Asian marketing team, Aisha, Doreen, and their team to give us a fully support goes beyond just business. They have become a very vital partner in celebrating our culture and bringing people together. This is why I strongly recommend supporting their expansion as they can continue to be a positive force in our community for years to come. Thank you very much.
Good morning, committee. Good morning. Let me start with this. I do support a hundred percent the work that Resorts World is hoping to do. But just sitting down and listening to the different words and the different key language and things that are coming out, the thing that pops out the most is partnership. And when you have an organization and you work in a silo, and to have real partnership, I think it's exemplified with what Resorts World does, that all of us have that individual feeling of partnership with an organization of that size, and that means something. And so, being the Executive Director of the Southern Queens Park Association, forty-nine-year-old organization that's been around as a pillar in our community, I express my full and enthusiastic support for the expansion of Resorts World New York City. This expansion is not just about buildings and revenue. It's about bringing real lasting impact to the people of Queens. It means jobs, it means resources, and it means uplifting communities that have historically been overlooked. We need partners who invest, that word partner again, partner, who invest in the people, and Resorts World has already proven they can deliver. We proudly stand with them in this once-in-a-lifetime generation opportunity. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Linda Derry, and I am a current upcoming senior at Queens College. I'm currently studying design and computer science. In addition to being a student, I'm a community activist, an environmentalist, and a photographer. Community involvement is at my core, which is why I'm proud to show you today the Resort Worlds' impact personally on me. I've been involved with local events since I was around seven years old, but Resorts World was continuously at events, whether offering their time, resources, or support. Their philanthropy has also always been heard in the community and impacts personal lives like mine. In 2022, I was one of the winners of the Showing Hearts Foundation Youthpreneur Summit, which invests in young people pursuing their businesses and dreams. I showcased my photography business, Crystal Shot NY, and used the prize money supported by Resorts World to build a website as well as buy brand-new camera gear. That experience showed me that my business matters and that the work that I pour into my community is valued. That recognition is really invaluable. As I prepare to graduate, my career is consistently on my mind, and I'm pursuing technology, specifically UX UI design and software development, which I'm deeply passionate about. Resorts World's expansion will add over three thousand five hundred jobs to their existing workforce and not just entry-level positions, real opportunities for growth as well as advancement. As someone born and raised in Queens, keeping millions of dollars in my community and my borough to support local families impacts me directly. I know that with this expansion, Resorts World Casino can continue to change lives and strengthen our community. In scholarships, educational support, resources, careers, and philanthropy, investing in them means investing in our community, our homes, and our future. As living proof of what they can do to impact our youth, I urge you to join me in fully supporting this expansion. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I feel like I'm a dinosaur. Everyone is reading out from the phone, and I'm reading from a piece of paper. Hi, my name is Hong Sheng Li. I'm Executive Director of C M P. We are a nonprofit, community-based organization dedicated to promoting economic self-sufficiency and career advancement. We do this by providing employability, asset building, job training, job placement, career counseling, and small business development. Talk about partnership. We actually started our partnership with Resorts World since 2011, when they first launched their casino in Jamaica, and they were doing recruitment for their workforce, and we did a two-day recruitment event at our headquarters with them. And in two days, we fielded numerous phone calls and helped to arrange interviews and meetings with the Resorts World staff at our headquarters in two days. And since then, they have participated in our semi-annual job fair, which we have locations in Manhattan and in Queens. And our honorable professor actually had come to one of our job fairs and started the ceremony event. Well, we are, I think, through extensive community outreach, our job fair and our recruitment event not only bring potential candidates to Resorts World, we also created a lot of employment opportunities for our constituents. And also, at that time, it was a lot of the people in our community heard about Resorts World the first time. We are impressed with Resorts World's current proposed expansion of its existing facility in Southeast Queens. The plan represents a major workforce opportunity, direct and indirect, for C M P's constituents, many of whom are residents of the Borough of Queens. Anticipating jobs created would range from minimum skilled labor workforce to professional positions. Resorts World's retail, tourist, hospitality, and convention attractions also present wide range of small business opportunities to our community. Together with this proposed STEAM center, athletic facility, media content lab, and other community investment features, the proposed project positions to be more than a workforce opportunity, but a comprehensive community development package. It would be much welcome to have such economic development project that brings about this level of job and small business opportunities as well as community investment opportunities. Thank you.
All right, so we've got two more speakers to go. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have prepared remarks, but I'll probably go on and off script. Oh, I only have two minutes. All right, let me hurry up. Chairperson and members of the Resorts World New York City Community Advisory Committee, I am Councilmember Natasha Williams, representing District Twenty-Seven. And I want to begin by expressing my gratitude for the opportunity to speak today about Resorts World and its impact, not only on Southeast Queens, but New York City. As I'm sure you have heard, numerous hearings, presentations, testimonies about Resorts World, the number of people they employ, how close they are to the facility, the types of demographics that make up the employees, including gender and ethnic and racial diversity, and the fact that Resorts World has strong union membership. I am particularly grateful for Resorts World's focus on the future as they partner with York College to provide workforce development programs in my district and train and prepare residents, building skills and creating career opportunities that directly benefit the community. These initiatives demonstrate Resorts World's meaningful and earnest commitment to creating equitable opportunities for our diverse community. The jobs created by Resorts World bring real economic benefits to our neighborhood's residents, gain stable employment, and opportunities for career growth. And in my thirty seconds, I just wanted to say that in my experience as a council member, before a council member working for the J K R V Development Program, Resorts World has always been a strong partner in the community. I've been working really closely with them to advance an effort that would really bridge STEAM education and new markets for the future. And I just support their proposal and look forward to working with them in their increase of their casino. Thank you.
Okay, the closing act. Let me just take this down if I can. All right. So just as a council member, I'll try to keep my remarks under two minutes. So good day to the CAC. Thank you all for your work. I want to thank the New York State Gaming Commission for their commitment to a fair process and putting community first. Now, I'll admit, I don't gamble myself, but this is certainly an issue that impacts many of our residents, and I'd probably lose anyhow. So, but I'm grateful for this opportunity. So first, I want to say that Resorts World has done a significant amount of outreach to the community and those who are impacted and will be impacted by the expansion. I think the Resorts World has also done a great work with supporting the renovation of the local subway station and creating a land bridge that connects the property to it. But as a local elected official in the neighborhood, I can say that my neighbors are asking for more. I want to be clear, I support Resorts World pursuit of an expanded license if and only if certain community conditions are met. These conditions are not only important, but essential to ensuring that the expansion truly benefits the community and not just the casino itself. Physical investments in the community, Resorts World has done well. The property looks great, and their proposal is outstanding. However, we want to see more investment directly into physical infrastructure in the surrounding community. I'm proposing the creation of a one-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar community investment fund so that there can be a clear community benefits agreement. So if Resorts World is here, take out your checkbook because we're very serious about direct investment in the community. Secondly, the unemployment rate in Queens County is five-point-one percent, which is higher than the state and national average, and it's probably even higher in one-one-four-two-zero, one-one-six-nine-one. So I am asking Resorts World, in their proposal, to consider ensuring direct and local investment for the community. Last but not least, as I close, and see my seconds are going over, mental health and addiction services. Of course, we know gambling is an addictive sport, and we'd like to see physical in-community assets, assets that represent the casino in the community, not on the casino property, but a footprint in the community. And I believe that a one-hundred-and-forty-million-dollar community investment fund would do just that. And we're seeing entities across the city make important investments directly in the local communities that they're looking to apply for licensing. Resorts World can and will do this, and their proposal, as I stated, is outstanding. They have many of these elements included, but the fund specifically would help ensure that investments are there. And there is a community-driven, responsible model to develop the existing neighborhood. Now is the time for Resorts World to demonstrate its commitment to not only its own success, but to the success of the community that it operates in. We've seen what can happen when community benefits are ignored. Just look at Atlantic Yards. Years later, they're still crying and begging for the resources that they were owed and due to them, they being the community. I don't believe that's the case here, but I do believe that we, even as an elected official, have a unique responsibility and a duty to hold them accountable. But again, I support their application if and only if the community is able to benefit. Thank you all so much.
At this time, that's our last speaker. We're going to take a ten-minute break and just give people an opportunity to kind of file in if they need to. And at that point, the chair and the committee can make the decision to close the hearing early. So give us ten minutes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, can we get number 43, please?
Check. There we go. Good afternoon, everyone. How are we doing? Good. My name is Candace Prince-Mottes. I'm the Director of Government Relations and Community Affairs for New Terminal One at JFK Airport. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to address you this afternoon. Wanted to talk briefly about the $19 billion redevelopment project that's happening at JFK Airport. Of that, $9 billion of that work is going towards the building of the new Terminal One. We're poised to open Phase One in mid-2026, and Phase B will be completed by 2030. We're talking about over 10,000 jobs over the course of the project, and we're looking at building the largest airport terminal in the U.S. We're striving to provide a world-class experience at an all-international terminal. And so, for someone in my position, when I look around at the local landscape and think about what type of partners make sense for an entity like us to connect with, who in the Queens community is setting the standard in terms of responsible expansion, focusing on workforce development that prioritizes the Queens community, there's nobody else but Resorts World New York City. You can't move around Queens and not see Resorts World in the community, whether they're supporting cultural events like the Rise Up New York City Concert we just had this past weekend, the Juneteenth Celebration at Royal Wilkins Park, supporting back-to-school efforts, Thanksgiving programs, end-of-year holiday events, job fairs, internships, environmental stewardship projects, college courses at York College. Queens is better because of Resorts World New York City. They have already proven their commitment to being a longstanding member of our community. We at New Terminal One at JFK Airport strongly support Resorts World's proposal to become a full-fledged casino. They are ready for the challenge, and I know that the community respects and supports their efforts. Switching hats very quickly, I'm also here in front of you as President of the Jamaica Branch NAACP. And I will say that, full disclosure, when the casino first opened, Racino back then, first opened in 2011, we were not too happy to welcome them into the community. But I will say that in the, what, 15 years that they've been around, they have shown us time and time again why they deserve to be in this community and why we should prioritize their expansion. In terms of the NAACP, when we talk about economic development, we are always looking for opportunities for local folks, for Black communities, Black and Brown communities, to be able to have access to the same opportunities as everybody else. And Resorts World has shown us that they have the capacity to do that. They have the capacity to support the local community, to support local nonprofits, and we will in turn continue to support them. So in closing, I look forward to witnessing their continued growth, and I'm excited at the prospect of offering our international travelers at New Terminal One a world-class experience right here in Queens. Thank you so much.
All right, so good afternoon. As we have no more individuals wishing to speak, we are going to make a decision as a committee to adjourn the public hearing for the Resorts World New York City CAC. As mentioned, today's hearing was the first of two. The second public hearing is going to be on September 15th from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in this location. If you, if someone's arriving late or needs to, you can send it to, there's an email address, ResortsWorldNewYorkCityPublicComment@NewYorkStateTEC.com, or you can mail it to Resorts World New York City Community Advisory Committee, care@NewYorkStateTEC, 540 Broadway, Third Floor, Albany, New York, 12207, for any other additional written comments. That is all, we're concluding today's hearing, public hearing. Thank you, on behalf of the committee and all of us.